I think you're on, yeah. I think I'm down. Right, I think that's right. I think I'm on my way. I just feel like I'm on my shoulder. I just like that. I'm not asleep.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, alright, I'm so.
You got the little last thing.
Oh, yeah, I know. I bet my back is hurting, hurting pretty bad. Well, I'm gonna be straight later. I'm gonna leave. Yeah, about two weeks.
I hear some car. I hear some car. Pray about it. Downstairs. It suits the Alavender. Ring two, have to get a floor, see, block eight in Alavender.
Save your seat, boy.
Good.
I'll get a little long winded down there.
Oh, Lord. Very much so.
It's about the type of meeting in your life, isn't it?
No, not really. Alright, good.
Thank you. Waiting on, waiting on. They had a meeting downstairs, TAC meeting.
It's good. Yeah, it's almost like normal.
Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, meeting to order. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. Also like to remind you to turn off any electronic devices that you may have with you. Pray with me. We bow our heads to ask for a path that leads us, to use our talents to the best of our ability for the people of this city. Let us all be truly thankful for another day, to rejoice in our families as we pray for those alone and sick, to appreciate what we have and to remember there are many with much less. As we work through our busy lives, remind us to save some time to help someone make it through theirs. Guide us to enjoy the day we have and glad for the one tomorrow. And always we pray for peace. Please be with this council and staff members as we make decisions that will affect our citizens and our community. Amen. First item on the agenda is a proclamation, Family Fun Day at North Park. We'd recognize Brittany Parish and Phaedra Blackwell if you'd come forward, please. Excuse me. Proclamation proclaiming Saturday, September sixth, two thousand fourteen, as Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park in the city of Burlington. Whereas Pinnacle Ministries presents Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park, and whereas the event is designed to provide good, clean, and wholesome fun for families, and whereas the event promotes education, provides resources in the areas of health, wellness, and nutrition, whereas the event is designed to strengthen relationships that foster responsibility and unity concerning the needs of our city's young, elderly, and disadvantaged, and whereas the activities of the day will include Shanks, LaShore, Thomas Health Fair, B.C. Chambers Super Flea Market, Roy Blackwell Farmer's Market, Ed Miles Car Show, Sidney Smith Amazing Race, David Maynard Basketball Tournament, Herbert Bush Softball Tournament, Tony Forrest Reading Corner, Leon Skoggins Horseshoe Tournament, Mako Bigelow Grill Off, Miss Couch Best in Desserts Competition, Children's Activities Choir, and Art Performers. Now therefore, I, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor of the city of Burlington, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September sixth, two thousand fourteen, as Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park in the city of Burlington. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Wall and Councilmen, for also approving the proclamation and also supporting us and assisting us with our third annual Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park this year. We are expecting another great turnout this year. We're very grateful for the local businesses and churches and civic organizations for assisting us again this year to come together as one, to enjoy this day of food, family, and fun. But if you are looking for a day to come out and enjoy a day of good food, and also just get together with old friends or looking to meet new friends, I encourage you all to come out and enjoy a good day of music, food, fun, and fellowship.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be a presentation to council, the forty and eight, David E. Van Warner. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Dave Van Warner, National Sioux Membership Director for the LaSocette D'Ors Quand Tomes, Oui Chez Vos, also known as the forty and eight. Give you a brief history, real brief. The only way to get around World War I in Europe was by the French boxcar. And the French boxcar was marked forty slash eight, meaning it could carry forty men or eight horses. So they would go to one place, drop off the eight horses, the forty men would get on, forty men would get off, the eight horses get on. So that's how way we got around in our, in Europe. At this time, resolution of endorsement, whereas the grand promenade due North Carolina requires and needs the cooperation and good wishes of the city and business leaders during our grand promenade, and whereas the Burlington, North Carolina mayor and city council were gracious enough to answer our quest for aid and success, and therefore be it resolved, Burlington, North Carolina mayor Ronnie K. Wall and the city council be hereby commended for the cooperation to the fullest extent to make our visit an enjoyable one and welcomes the distinguished members of the forty and eight and the thims. And be it further resolved, the grand promenade assembled July eighteenth through July twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Hardly thanks the mayor and the members of the Burlington, North Carolina city council for the hospitality. This resolution is placed before the grand promenade for its favorable consideration. Approved it our grand, North Carolina promenade duly assembled Burlington, North Carolina this nineteenth day of July, two thousand fourteen, testified Grand Chef de Garre, Keith Kane, Grand Membership Director, myself, Dave Van Warner. Also, LaSocette D'Ors Quand Tomes, Oui Chez Vos, certificate of appreciation. Their certificate is awarded to the Burlington, North Carolina mayor Ronnie K. Wall, in recognition of valuable contributions to the success of the grand promenade due North Carolina held in Burlington, North Carolina, July eighteenth through the twentieth, two thousand fourteen, signed by Grand Chef de Garre, Keith Kane, Grand Membership Director, Dave Van Warner. May I approach?
Yes, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
This is one of our programs of reading.
Thank you, sir.
Really deal with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be a recognition. This time we'd recognize Assistant Chief of Police Eric Kearns.
Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. In community policing, we push this all the way down to our patrol officers, and in community policing and solving problems, sometimes we have to have community support. And tonight we'd like to make a presentation to Home Depot in regards to a project that Officer Meadows, as you know, was involved in the Eva Barker Park renovation with the playground, was also involved in this, and I'd like to bring up Staff Sergeant Shane Brown and Winston for the presentation. Mr. Ramsey?
A little background, on May the twenty-third, Officer Meadows responded to a hit-and-run accident on Delaware Avenue. During his investigation, it was property damage, a mailbox post was hit, and there was no suspects, didn't know who had caused the damage. The lady living on Delaware Avenue didn't have means to put another post up, so Officer Meadows took it upon himself to try to solicit some help. Went to Mr. Ramsey at Home Depot, explained the situation to him. Mr. Ramsey in Home Depot donated a post and a mailbox, and Officer Meadows, with the help of another officer, went out and put the lady's mailbox back up. So, like Assistant Chief Kearns said, we couldn't do community policing without community support, and so we wanted to recognize Mr. Ramsey in Home Depot for that.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Well, this is a surprise, but we like to treat any situation like that as if we're helping a neighbor, and I really appreciate the award. And anytime y'all need something, we'll be there for you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics. This time we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward.
Men of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid complex adventures and matters that are before us. At this time, I ask of hearing potential conflicts concerning community rights.
Next item is approval of the minutes, August fourth, two thousand fourteen, city council meeting.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Adoption of the agenda.
We adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Consider the agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item one, A, to adopt an ordinance approving the traffic commission, recommendation for stop signs at the Melmark Estates subdivision, Rebecca Court Northern Approach to Melmark Drive, Melmark Drive Eastern Approach to Apple Street. B, to approve the renewal of municipal agreement, Schedule C, signals with North Carolina Department of Transportation. This municipal agreement establishes the reimbursement mechanism for maintenance work that the city of Burlington conducts on NCDOT traffic signals. C, to avoid a bid, to award a bid to PNC Equipment Finance for a lease slash purchase funding agreement at a loan interest rate of point nine-two-zero percent for all major equipment purchases. Lease documents provided by the PNC Equipment Finance have been approved by the city attorney and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute the documents. D, budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash eleven, general fund two thousand fourteen, fifteen, budget finance equipment is spelled out in your agenda. E, budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, CDVG real, reallocation of funds spelled out in your agenda. F, budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, fire, fire rescue truck is spelled out in your agenda. Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Unfinished business, two, a public hearing has been continued to consider rezoning from RF fifteen residential district to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development and CO and I Conditional Office and Institutional District for the uses specified from the table of permitted uses under office and institutional zoning, with the exception of boarding houses and veterinarian offices. Properties located east of University Drive, south of South Church Street, and west of Huffman Lane is shown on Almonds County Platt Book, seventy-sixth page, two thirty-eight. An invalid protest petition has been received, continued from the July fifteenth, two thousand fourteen city council meeting. At this time, we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and council. This request has the recommendation of staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The proposed uses meet the current land use plan, which calls for planned community mixed use. It is consistent with surrounding uses, namely the development to the west across the street, the shops at Waterford. The plan also has approval from the city's technical review committee, and Mr. Lawson Brown is here to speak for the applicant.
Mayor Wall, members of the council, I would beg your indulgence for continuance to the first meeting in September. Mr. Kayla was here representing the neighbors. We're ninety-nine percent of the way here to have the issues resolved so that it will not cause you any heartburn, so would ask for your indulgence one more time to have the public hearing continued until the first meeting in September, which I believe is September the eighth.
Second. September second.
Any questions or comments from council to Mr. Brown?
No, I think in light of what they're trying to accomplish, I would make the motion that we grant the request to continue the meeting until September the second.
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Mr. Brown. That brings us to a public hearing, three. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider rezoning from CR Conditional Residential District and CB Conditional Business District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a hundred and forty-four unit apartment complex. The property is located at the intersection of Springwood Church Road, Springwood Village Drive, and Whitsit Park Road is shown on Guilford County Tax Parcels, one zero three three one two, one zero three three one three, and a portion of Guilford County Tax Partial, one zero three two four seven. At this time, we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. Mayor and council, staff, and the Planning and Zoning Commission have found this proposal to be consistent with land uses in the area and are recommending approval. The proposed site plan has also received approval from the city's technical review committee, and Mr. Kevin Sasser is here to speak on this request.
Before we get to Mr. Sasser, describe what's on the screen in reference to the red and the yellow.
It's a little, it's a little difficult to see with all the hash marks.
Right.
The red is the entire area, the request to rezone property from CR Conditional Residential and CB Conditional Business to CR Conditional Residential, and that's what the extra hash marks are for.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Nelson? Mr. Sasser, welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Kevin Sasser, and I'm here tonight representing Springwood Partners, the applicant. My other two partners, Tom Hall of Windsor Homes and Charles Jones, along with our engineer, Vince Townsend, are here with me and available for any questions you may have. I'd like to give you a little history on the property. Springwood Partners purchased approximately seventy acre tract in two thousand four and extended utilities to the property. Project, project was originally developed into four parcels. Two parcels were zoned Conditional Residential and were purchased by Windsor Homes for single-family homes and townhomes. One was zoned multifamily and was purchased by Woodland Heights of Burlington and developed with apartments. The remaining was zoned Conditional Business and is approved for daycare consisting of a hundred children and a convenience store with a maximum building size of three thousand, three thousand square feet. The townhome portion of the property consisted of sixteen point six-five-four acres, which has been graded and the utilities have been installed. The first phase of this project consisted of seventy-six lots. To date, Windsor Homes has built and sold thirty-two and have forty-four left to build in the first phase. The remaining portion of the sixteen point six-five-four acres is seven point two-eight acres, which is a portion of the property that is being considered tonight. We feel that the market for this product has dried up, dried up on Windsor Homes, and just, that's one of the biggest reasons that we're here tonight. The remaining four point eight-two acres, which makes up the total of twelve point one acres that is being considered for rezoning tonight, is a portion that I spoke of earlier that's on for the daycare and the convenience store. This property has since, has been marketed with a realtor since, since we developed it, and we've just been unable to attract anyone. We thought, we thought it was a great, a great use, especially with the park being there, convenience store, daycare for the neighborhood, but we've just been unable to get anywhere with it. So, we have, we have been looking for an economically feasible plan to use this property due to the fact that it's been graded and the utilities have been installed, and the plan before you tonight for the hundred and forty-four apartments is the best that we've been able to come up with for the use that, you know, is already existing there. When we presented this to the planning and zoning, we agreed to plant a buffer between the, between the apartment site and the townhome site, and we've also offered to construct an area for the city to have a police substation to help with some of the concerns that we heard from the neighbors when we held a neighborhood meeting, and also that we heard at the planning and zoning commission. I'll be glad to answer any questions that yourselves, the public, may have, and also Tom Hall with Windsor Homes would like, would like an opportunity to speak right behind me if that's, if that's possible.
Mr. Sasser, you said a buffer, a police substation?
Yes.
What were some other things that you heard from your neighborhood meeting that was concerning?
The biggest concerns that we heard was, was traffic, and we also heard that the crime, crime was the biggest concerns that we heard.
And the crime was going to be created by your hundred and forty-four apartments?
That is, I think that was the consensus that the neighbors had. Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, mayor and council. I just wanted to come speak both as a partner in the overall project as well as representative from Windsor Homes. Windsor has made a big investment and commitment and has built the sixty-four single-family homes and thirty-two of the townhomes, and is committed to complete construction on the forty-four townhome lots that are currently developed and ready to be built on, just waiting for market timing to improve a little bit. Those forty-four townhomes, in our mind, there would be an additional sixty-nine on that back, sixty-nine townhomes on that back piece of property, and right now with, buyer sentiment has changed, as we all know, and there's a lot of certain segments of the market that are having preference towards renting, and that's what we have experienced. So, we'll be able to proudly work through the remaining townhomes that we have, and then hope that we can find a more compatible and complimentary use for the rest of the property.
Questions for Mr. Hall?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, the, you guys are wanting to eliminate the Conditional Business portion that you have there named?
Yes.
Which is a convenience store and a daycare, so that's already approved, could be built, could be put up, which would certainly have an impact on traffic. You just want to eliminate that, make the whole piece to, to a multifamily?
Correct.
Project in itself, okay.
How many acres total?
On the whole apartment?
This project, this project.
Twelve point one.
Okay. You show anything, Mr.?
Yeah. Chief Kearns, if we should decide to pass this tonight on putting a police substation there, I guess it's time for, would we be able to do that?
We have one currently at A R and C.
Right.
We need to look at the need with that one location there, and with Fire Station Six, of course, access there. So we'll look at the need and see, we have looked out in Guilford County because it puts us further out.
Right.
Potentially, but I can give you.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, yeah.
You guys are policing the area there anyway with the park. You're there fairly often anyway through events and whatnot through the area.
Yes, fair enough.
Any other questions? Public hearing? Thank you, sir. Since it's a public hearing, anyone that would like to speak will be given the opportunity. Anyone on this side that would like to speak, come forward, please. As you make your way up, please be reminded to state your name and your residence, please.
My name is Deborah Green. I live at one five zero five Daisy Park Drive in Whitsit, North Carolina. We did, we all, we had many people that came last time, and the biggest concerns we had were that when we bought into this development, it was to have that community feel that we'd have neighbors that we would get to know over the years. We've invested in our homes and this, the, the single, the single-family homes were complete, and they were able to sell all those houses. The townhouse community, they haven't built a townhouse, I don't know, a couple of years ago, probably. So, the townhouse first phase is undeveloped, and now they want to put some apartments there, but since we've, we, since I've lived there and since two thousand and seven, there has been another apartment complex that has been built in the area, and since that has occurred, we have seen an increase in crime in our, in our neighborhood. My van was stolen from my driveway, several people in the neighborhood's vehicles were broken into, we have constant traffic from the apartments with people walking through our neighborhoods, different hours of the night, dogs coming through with them, and they just let them, you know, leave their waste in our yard. Let's see, we had a bomb threat in that neighborhood, in that apartment complex already. We had a gun shooting in that neighborhood already.
You say that neighborhood, you're talking about the apartments?
The apartments, exactly. The apartment families were allowed in there for like, it was blocked off for, gosh, six hours or so while they cleared the whole apartment thing, so it's been a lot of things that have gone on since the one apartment complex has come up, and can you, by any chance, put the picture of the neighborhood back up on the screen for us? I just wanted to show one more thing. So, you know, those type of things are a concern, and when you, we moved in this neighborhood from Durham to come here, we would pass by, our kids were in college at U N C G, we found this nice cute neighborhood, the quiet community of Whitsit, and we thought, wow, this is a great place for us to buy our home and to retire into, and really like that feeling of a neighborhood. When you have an apartment complex, you're a transient kind of a family, you're not planning on staying there for a long time, you don't have anything vested in the community, and so by adding another complex, we're not going to have that feeling of that neighborhood. Do you mind if I walk up to the screen for a minute?
Sure. Fine.
So, the pink is the part where it said that the, the daycare and the convenience store was supposed to go, and then over here, right here is the apartments now, these are the houses here, then up in this front part, these are townhouses that are all underdeveloped, and this was supposed to be townhouses here too, so we were expecting to have, you know, more community put in there, but if that whole area now is going to be townhouses, maybe apartments, we're going to have apartments here and apartments here, so our small pieces of houses are going to be sandwiched between this huge town apartments, and it's really going to take away our community feel for us by having it all blocked in like that. I mean, we're going to have an L shape just crowding this little small set of houses, and we're not going to have our community anymore. And so that's, that's, and for me, it's about community, you know, having like the ownership of my community, being able to have get-togethers, knowing people, and we're not going to be able to have that now. We're going to be, how many houses did you say?
One forty, oh.
Sixty-four, so sixty-four houses that are just going to be blocked in with nothing else around it. There's this great, a park, park across the street, we were looking forward to enjoying that. I don't even feel safe walking because we have all these just transient people in there all the time. I got myself a big dog after my car was stolen, they opened up my garage and everything, I'm home some nights by myself, you know, so for all those reasons, when you move into a community, you move there because you want to have that sense of family and community and knowing your neighbors. want to have that sense of family and community and knowing your neighbors. And so, that was the biggest concern that we all, you know, shared that this is going to take away from our neighborhood, that we've used our money to buy our homes and now possibly the value will go down because, you know, you just have these 64 houses all by themselves.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we do have a petition with 500 signatures from the Carson Farms community, the, our community and the Lake Macintosh community also that have all signed a petition, 500 people.
How far would the signatures come from where this is going to take place?
So, right across where the zigzag line, you know, there's the main road at the top, over there's the park there and then the line there, that's Carson Farms. And so, they're right there in the neighborhood with this. And then Lake Macintosh, coming from the back end where the little road that goes to the middle of the neighborhood?
Right.
It comes down. Their neighborhood, if you cross over the bridge, is right through there. So, it affects them because they have direct traffic with it also from it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
My name is Vicki Axum. I live at 1435 Daisy Park Drive. I'd like to reiterate our concerns of property value. This was the house I was going to live in, the last one. The traffic from the apartments down at the end, there's only two ways to get in. It's from Witsit Park Road, which is up at the very top of the screen. You come through our community and exit out on Springwood Church Road. It's my understanding from the meetings we've had before, the new apartment complex that they're proposing is going to come in on Springwood Village Drive, which is the one that runs from Witsit Park Road to Springwood Church Road. So, they're actually coming into our community to get into their apartment complex. So, that is definitely going to increase traffic.
Is that correct?
There's only two entrances into the multifamily park, which is like they were, no, there's...
Right down here.
There's the only two entrances into that development.
State that again.
There is no entrance to the north. There's only the two entrances on Springwood. Yeah, right here. These two entrances here. There's only two entrances that will be to the apartment complex.
They're, they're accessing through Springwood?
Yes. Exactly.
Which is the main, sort of the main artery into that area anyway from, from where the park is?
Yes. Well, that's the only way the single-family homes get, can get in to our development. That's the only way that the townhomes come in is from Witsit Park Road or Springwood Church Road. Well, the new apartment complex would also have to come in from Witsit Park or Springwood Church and then turn into their development from Springwood Village Drive.
So, the original plan would have called, to get to your, your townhomes, would have called for you to have passed through the community center as well as the daycare center to get to your properties?
I'm a, I'm a single-family home.
Okay.
So, I come in either one of those and, and go to the single-family homes. Also, I do have on my phone, I didn't have emails or texts or, I'd be glad to provide it. We have a problem on Springwood, Springwood Village Drive, which is the main access from Witsit Park to Springwood Church Road, with tractor-trailer trucks being parked there. I've got pictures of three separate tractor-trailer trucks that I've taken since the rezoning meeting. I've got license tags. I've got where the road signs where these trucks are parked. It's on that main road, right there. And they're parked there overnight, two or three days, different times.
Have you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Have you reported this?
I have not reported it, no. We have a deputy sheriff, Alamance, Alamance County Sheriff that lives in our development.
It is?
Yes. It's in Burlington City Limits. Guilford County!
Guilford County, City of Burlington.
Can you make sure that you get with this young lady so y'all can communicate after this meeting about that particular issue?
Well, we're just, where is that coming from? Where?
The apartments.
Are these the people that live in the apartments?
People that drive the trucks live in the existing apartments now, yes.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. All right.
So, there's, we feel like, I guess I can reiterate what Ms. Green said, that with another set of apartments, we're definitely going to be outnumbered as far as traffic and, and...
Okay.
Things such as this. And my biggest concern is my property value dropping.
Sure. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Anyone else that wants to speak on this side?
Sorry.
Sorry?
Hi. My name is Jennifer Tashner Lombard. I live at 7324 Garrett Park Drive, which is in the townhome divisions. I bought my townhome, first home ever, four and a half years ago, and I really enjoy being a homeowner. I am, have, share the same concerns as the single-family homes when it comes to being sandwiched in by these large apartment buildings and the increase in, in the rate of crime and most importantly, my property value going down. That's something I just, I just can't afford to lose. And so, and I, I know that my neighbors do share my concerns and many of us, the townhomes were also, have also signed the same petitions that the single-family homes organized for us.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Good evening. John Oaks, Burlington, 2266 Glen Kirk Drive. I'm confident that, Mayor, good to see you, bye. I'm sorry, I've had a busy day and found out about this last minute and haven't done my due diligence like I typically try to do. I used to work for Builder. Three years on the P and Z board, so I'm very empathetic with these decisions. They're very challenging. And I'm also, I also understand the rights of a property owner to develop his property. But I'm confident that even the developers will agree with this. I'm confident that when those 64 homes were built, they were not towning complexes in the future. Confident of that. Thirty-two, thirty-two townhomes, same thing. The 44 that will be developed, they have been there a long, I ride my bike back there. I live in Macintosh Lake and I can assure you that the problems that these ladies have discussed, whom, I don't know any of these people there, they're accurate. Take it from a bike rider who lives in the area and is riding all, you know, all hours of the day and the evening. We used to do feasibility studies that would indicate a reasonable factor that we used back when, and this was in a different community that was half the size of Burlington. We use numbers for apartments and the ratio when it comes to vehicles of one to one and a half. Let's say, let's be reasonable and just say one. Most people live in an apartment and have a, in that community, we'll have a vehicle. It's 144 vehicles. Excuse me. We use the factor of 1.5, that's going to be 216 vehicles. We, we found out over time when I was on P and Z, I learned a lot of statistical data that I'm not going to attempt to convey to you guys tonight. So, I'm confident these men have already gone through that in the planning department with them personnel. But one thing we know for certain on a practical level is that the average Joe, whom I represent thoroughly, will always take the route of least resistance. So, if he's going to be heading west, since the apartments have been built, how it's relative to my neighborhood, he's going to be going through Macintosh on the lake. And take it from a guy who's out there with our local sheriff guys who live in the community. He's out there the other night. The activity that goes on after most of us are asleep with these vehicles is very different than the activity when you and I are walking the streets. The traffic through our community will increase substantially. Now, granted, it is my backyard, so I'm definitely biased. But I'm, I think where I get frustrated with these processes is, you know, developers plan, the guy I used to work for out of Pittsburgh, they bought this property 30 years ago, before they started developing properties. I mean, we all know everything's in cycles and there will never be a market post 2008 again. That's over because there was a bubble. We saw that coming years and years in advance, anybody in the business. But now, just on a practical level, to, to want to change gears for the average person, just go, can't you just take a couple extra years? Can't you just hang in there with us? You know, maybe we can, how can the community help promote? We'll help sell the community. Will these be three-story apartments that's presently there now that, I'm telling you, that has changed the dynamics of that neighborhood? I would challenge you respectfully, go out there on a Friday night. Go out there on a Friday night, just check it out. But again, I'm coming to you strictly, I know it's going to decrease property values and the type of people that typically, and I've been there, that move into apartment complexes are good folks. A lot of them are families, but they are in transition. And so, we just ask you to give that consideration this year.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is April Blackwell and I stay at 7310 Garrett Park Drive. I own one of the townhomes. This is my first home. When I purchased the home, I was told the property value would not decrease, that I was secure in what I had purchased. My home is valued over $100,000. Since the apartments have been installed back there, my property value has dropped to $93,000. So, the idea that renting does not decrease the property value is a lie. We all bought our homes for a reason and mainly because of the security that we thought we had. As they have said, the bomb threat, you went, this was on a Sunday afternoon. You go out and it's a line of traffic. All the apartments, nobody from the apartments could get in. They lined that whole street and nobody in our neighborhood knew until we walked out. We wondered where all the cars were there and then we find out there's a bomb threat. So, what security do we have? You say put in a substation. From my experience, when you install a substation in the division, that's considered projects. So, you're now telling us our 100,000 homes are now projects. Something that some people struggle to get away from. You're putting them right back in there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Brandalyn White and I am a resident at 7702 Oliver Park Drive. I've been, first-time home buyer since 2007 and was highly pleased with that area, actually moved out of an apartment complex in Greensboro. And what attracted me to it was the neighborhood and the way it was laid out with the park and everything. So, I was highly pleased. When I learned about the possible placement of the apartments, my townhome, I probably could show you, my townhome, I'm on an in-unit, which is right beside the field in which the apartments will be built. And when I heard about that, I was a little, I was hurt because I did not expect that when I bought the townhome. I knew about the businesses with the daycare and the, the convenience store. So, I knew that when I, when I bought the townhome. But as far as the apartments, that came, you know, came later. And so, I just want to just express my concern with those apartments being placed there. And if you have not been out to that area, please, as someone mentioned earlier, please ride out there just to see the land that they're looking to build these apartments on. Because when I learned, I was like, they're going to put apartments there. It just didn't seem suitable to me, given that we have the apartments already, the current ones already there. It just didn't seem like, you know, what's the big demand to put 144 units right on this land when you have actually apartment complexes, probably other apartment complexes within a 10 mile, within 10 miles or less? So, I questioned what was the big demand to put these apartments there? And some other questions as well, but I just ask you to take your time to really kind of research this matter further, take our concerns into consideration as well before making your decision. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you state your name and address?
Yes, it's Brandalyn and the last name is White. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Mayor, I'd like to follow up with the developer on this. If I can get this straight, you had 64 units that are built out now. You have 44 more lots that have yet to be built out but are remaining to be built out by a single-family ownership. And then you have 32 townhouses that are being eliminated. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
Okay. Help me with this.
There's 64 single-family homes built and sold. There's 32 townhomes built and sold. There's developed lots for an additional 44 townhomes that we will build out and where we would be eliminating 69 potential townhomes where the apartments would be proposed as well as the daycare and the convenience store.
Okay. So, we've got 140 residential units that are going to stay there. They were in phase one evidently. And this phase two had 69.
Yes.
And what we're doing is trading that in. We're getting rid of the commercial development and the daycare and 69 units and replacing all that with 144 residential units.
Yes, sir.
And are we talking about three-story buildings?
Yes, sir.
Have you completed a traffic study?
Um, I think Joey's going to be able to speak to that better than I'm going to be able to.
DOT and our traffic engineers looked at this and this type of development, based on the infrastructure, did not warrant an analysis, a traffic analysis.
Repeat that again.
There was not, there was no traffic analysis done because this type of development did not warrant it. The infrastructure was already there to carry the traffic.
So, in other words, DOT was not concerned about any traffic problems in this development with the new development forthcoming?
That's correct. We look at this in the technical review committee.
So, we went through technical review. Everything was fine. No, no issues with it and, and the, the traffic flow analysis was not warranted just because they didn't think it would have a substantive impact on the, on the ingress egress from Springwood?
That's correct. That's because apartments have peak hours, morning and evening.
Correct.
So, it's not a continuous.
Do you, do you think, would it, would it even be relevant to talk, to speak about it? But do you think if it was a office or a business enterprise there, a convenience store and daycare, the impact on traffic, because it would have been throughout today, would that have warranted a study maybe?
Probably not. Daycare, again, is sort of like this, it has a peak morning and evening.
Sure.
Convenience store could have been 24/7. That would have had probably a little more impact, but not enough, in my opinion.
At one time.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to say I...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Have we closed the public hearing yet? Do we need to do that first?
Mayor, it'd probably be good to hold it open in the event it's continued with other, you know, with other thoughts.
Okay. All right.
So, I would, I would suggest not closing it.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fossett.
Okay. And I, when I go out and look at property like that, I used to go out on, early...
Do we need to do that first?
There, it'd probably be good to hold it open in event this continues with other, you know, with other thoughts.
Okay, alright.
So I would suggest not closing it.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fossett.
Okay. And I, when I go out and look at property like that, I used to go out on early Sunday morning. I found it's the best time to go out and look at it, because there's nobody there to, what are you doing here? So I think maybe by, I didn't do all of my homework just going out, looking at it. I think I should have rode through the neighborhood to see what it was. But I would like to, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm not, I'd like to have this continue to maybe the next meeting, to give me a chance to go out there, not on early Sunday morning, but, you know, like Saturday afternoon or Friday afternoon, somewhere in that timeframe, to get a better feel for the situation out there and then the traffic that the neighbors are mentioning about. I'm not saying that, you know, that it won't happen, but I'd just like to have for myself to go out and take a look at it.
Let me ask you some follow-up on that. Are these apartments that are already built, are they in the corporate limits of Burlington?
I believe that's-
Do we have statistics as to the number of calls that have been made and responses out there? Or is that being responded to by the sheriff's department over in, in?
No, so we respond there, and I do not have any numbers for them.
Can we get those numbers? Also, I am concerned about this parking. I think that's, parking, that ruins a neighborhood when you have 18-wheelers sitting out there. I'd like to see what it is that's been really being done out there.
First time I heard of the problem, I'm sure if you had any CBC complaints.
Yeah, I understand.
But we will get the code enforcement, we'll address the issue.
I mean, because I know, even if these folks who are proposing building apartments, they don't want to create, they don't want to create a problem for their own folks that they're talking about building housing for. So I'd like, I'd like to have those figures.
Any other questions for Mr. Hall? Thank you.
If I may know a minute, and I hope that if we could continue this to the next meeting.
Mr. Fossett, could I suggest a second meeting in September to allow a little more time? I'd like to, I'd like to look at this and get the figure too, if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
Maybe the second meeting, September.
So Mr. Fossett, is that a motion?
To, yeah, to the second meeting in September.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, we'll continue this, Ms. Ward, until the second meeting in September. 16th, September 16th, we will continue this conversation. And in the meantime, we're going to get information from the police in reference to crime stats, and also we're going to address the concerns of the young lady in the back about the traffic of the tractor-trailer. Fair enough?
Okay.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. Yes, ma'am. Brings us to new business. Four, city council will consider approving an agreement for professional services with Ali Williams, Carmen and King in the amount of $335,000 for design of phase two of the 42-inch Hall River Interceptor Replacement Project in the Budget Amendment 2015-12, Hall River Interceptor Phase Two, as spelled out in your agenda. This time we recognize Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight. A few weeks ago, we approved the construction contract for, if you look at the diagram, the line in the pink or magenta, that is the first phase of the Hall River Interceptor Replacement. And that construction will start shortly. What we have tonight is consideration of a word of engineering contract with, to Ali Williams, Carmen and King for the design of all the work, all the lines shown in the yellow, to replace the existing line with a new line. This contract would include all the survey work, any construction easement preparation, and preparation of construction documents and drawings, and bidding of the contract, and some limited field work during construction. Our construction inspectors would handle the field construction. We had a team from the Engineering Department, Water Resources Department, and Public Works review proposals from five firms that we received, and we narrowed that down to three firms that we interviewed. And they're all highly qualified, but we felt that Ali Williams was the best fit for this project. And their scope of their work was, their estimate was 300 and... Thirty-five thousand? $335,000. Tonight, we ask you to approve the budget amendment to approve that, and the award the contract to Ali Williams.
Questions or comments to Mr. Patterson from council?
This is phase one of replacing that entire?
This would be the design of the phase two. And construction would be anticipated to, if everything fell into place, probably start around this time next year on that subsequent order.
We re-approved the agreement for professional services for Ali Williams, Carmen and King, $335,000, phase two, 42-inch Hall River Interceptor Replacement.
Second.
Got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Item number five, city council would sit awarding a contract to Shiloh Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $411,181.50 for construction of the Elwood Street Water System Improvements in approved budget amendment 2015-13. Elwood Street Water System Improvements to fund the project, spelled out in your agenda. This time we recognize Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Engineering Department designed this water line replacement and received bids a few weeks ago. We received three bids from contractors ranging from $411,181.50 to $869,467,000. Shiloh Utility was the apparent low bidder. We've done work with them, or they've done work for the city before, have done adequate, very good work. And the Engineering Department had recommended award of the contract to Shiloh. We had budgeted $30,000 in this year's budget, the low bid, Shiloh's bid amount was $411,181.50. So we have a request for a budget amendment to cover the full funding of the project, and also award of the contract to Shiloh.
Shiloh is located where?
They are from Roxboro, Eden, Eden, North Carolina.
And we've already approved $300,000.
Right. Yes. Yes, 300 allocated in the current budget.
Why don't you give Bob an idea of where this is located at in terms of?
Okay. This is the Webb Avenue, Railroad Tracks, Queen Anne Street, and North Meven Street. This yellow line is the proposed line, I'll zoom in a little bit here. It'll run between Texas Avenue and Graham Street, approximately 1,500 feet of 16-inch water main, just big water main, and also 400 feet of 6-inch and 12-inch water. We've had several breaks on this line, so it's definitely in need of replacement.
Questions for Mr. Patterson?
I make a motion that we approve the contract, budget amendment, to the Elwood Water System Improvements for $117,182.
Got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Next item will be a staff report, a transit update. This time we recognize Mr. Mike Nun. Welcome, Mr. Nun.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I wanted to give you an update of what, excuse me, what we've been doing since June, actually, when you approved, you know, for us to go forward with a fixed route system. Shortly thereafter, about two weeks, we convened a staff group made up of legal, admin, finance, planning, to start talking about several work tasks that were underway. Our first item that we'll be doing is securing grantee status. We've always had available the funds for Section 5307, but we've never actually applied to be a grantee and used them. So receiving state and federal funds is a typical process that you go through. Not only do you have these things in place with your financial controls and your legal system, they want you to answer questions and confirm those things. So we're going through that process. Some key items that will probably be coming to you soon will be policies that affect transportation programs that are funded with these transportation dollars. So these programs will be a Title VI program. No discrimination in anything that we do with transportation dollars. A disadvantaged business enterprise policy that we will be open and advertise properly to those businesses that are certified through NC DOT when we have equipment for bid or services for bid. That will be for transportation programs. So you'll have some transit policies that apply to those funds. It'll be coming to you as they work their way through. We are almost at the tail end of the paperwork for that process. The goal that staff has set is November. It's going to depend on the approval process of a few policies. So we've set that up as a loose goal to get that into the Federal Transit Administration. Their response back time is about 30 to 60 days on the content. Missing something, need to add something, question about something. And then it's going to take probably about three, possibly six months to really get this man for approval, get the letter in hand. They're aware that we're going through the process, aware of what we want to do, and so forth. So those are two, two of the main policies that will come to you through that. I also want to remind you that the equipment, we haven't forgotten about it. We're fortunate that the timing hit right, that we are able to participate with High Point, Greensboro, Concord, Park, and Burlington in like a group bid. It'd be a package that's gone out, it's already been certified, approved by FTA, NC DOT. So when they come back, we'll be able to purchase our equipment, if we, you know, if everything is like we want it, off of that bid.
What's the projected date of that?
We're supposed to get the bids back in October to know what the prices are. So that'll be an important part for us, once we find out the bid prices for the equipment. We recently, the manager has sent a letter to Meven, Gibsonville, and Elon requesting confirmation and commitment of participation in the system before we go beyond just becoming a grantee and start making service decisions. I believe in that letter, it was stated in October 8th response time. So we're hopeful that we can look towards that October 8th deadline to be able to tell you, and Harold, you can correct me if that's what we asked, to be able to say, you know, are these communities in? Yes, we're going forward, or no, we're not in at this time. So we tried to set that up so we can move on to the next step of implementation.
Is that going, that deadline going to slow us down for anything?
No. We're moving on administratively as quick as we can. In fact, tonight, we had a very good meeting at lunch today with TCC staff, and had an excellent meeting tonight at TAC. They endorsed the funds for your capital equipment startup, and endorsed the funds for your first-year operation. Whenever that's necessary, we're just sending the resolution now.
Okay.
So you have the funds approved from the MPO for your equipment and for your operations. That was a big step, I mean, as far as the region goes, that's, that was a big decision point. We don't want to forget, we're still working on information about the transit vehicle tax that's going to come to you through legal, I believe, is that correct, Charles?
I think we have, and the staff have talked about having that to present to council direction in December. Which means we'll probably get it to you October, November, because we have plenty of time to review it.
It'd be effective in July, July 1 of '15, probably, is what our schedule was.
We also don't want to forget that we still have a decision point to make, and that may, may not be impacted by a decision by others. We have to decide still if we're going to serve the parking ride lot, the courthouse, the community college. That's still on our plate, and we plan to bring that to you in short term as well as also. We've got to start making service decisions, so that's going to be a decision we make. Again, may or may not be impacted by those that are involved. And we've talked before with you about the finances of that. But that decision still needs to be made.
Let me make sure I understand that. You just said that we would need to get an answer back from other communities. October 8th was the deadline. Are we going to attempt to make that decision without their feedback? Are we going to pretend like they're not going to be a part of it we're continuing on?
The question is going to be, that we think probably is a question they're going to have from that letter, and we've already discussed it, is that question. Who's going to ACC and who's going to Park and Rod? For example, Meven, that's a decision for them. They don't know who's going to make that. So we're asking them to make a decision, are they in, without that guidance? So we're going to get some feedback on that letter. I don't know if you can either explain that.
No, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in that letter, Harold, didn't we ask them to consider certain alternatives, among them being your cost if we go to ACC, your cost if we go to Graham? So we gave them a full picture of what the cost would be. We expect some feedback from them.
I think when they give us response, we'll have a clearer picture on that decision. And still, the governance issue is out there as well. We've been, we have informed them of what the action was as far as the advisory commission. That was communicated as well. So we're working closely with those that are still interested.
Okay.
Get that back to you.
I spoke with the managers from Gibsonville and Meven this afternoon, following, there were some of their discussions yesterday.
And speaking of that, Charles also has, I think, a goal of September work session, maybe for the advisory commission.
We're going to give you a draft of the advisory commission ordinance and September work session, yes. Assuming it's not on the 1st of September.
Alright.
That's today, the highlights, certainly can answer any questions you have or-
Questions for Mr. Nun? Comments?
I got one. I think tomorrow, reasonable starts their bus system. It sort of seems like to me that they were using like Afta to run, because they were going to do some, you know, like running a bus from here to Madison, or, you know, somewhere like that, you know?
Yeah, it's a different concept.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Not truly an urban, I mean, but it's inside a city. But it's not like an urbanized area like ours, but it's going to be a similar concept.
Is there's 5311 funding?
Yeah. It'll be a different funding pot. Now, they can get some inside, inside the city limits, they could be eligible for 5307.
For the urban portion, yeah, rather than 5311. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, Mr. Nun.
Mr. Mayor, this may have mentioned a subsequent decision on the transit vehicle tax. Are you talking one or two taxes?
It's up to the council, I mean, there are two available. The council, to my knowledge, the council has identified to the staff whether they're going to consider one or both.
And will that decision, in either case, necessitate a public hearing on the tax?
There are no required legal public hearings. However, the council may choose to have an informational public hearing, that's up to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Nun. Next item will be tethering. This time we'd recognize Jessica Erst, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. And I trust everyone was able to get the report in their packet of the tethering report. That came to you as per your request on May 15th, or the May 5th, city council meeting, at which time we had made some updates regarding animal services operations. And one of the things on our looking forward list of things to do was to address tethering in the city. So this report was in response to that. I didn't, what I've done this evening is prepare a little PowerPoint presentation to kind of highlight the report, since the report was quite lengthy with a lot of information. But essentially, just to kind of recap what's contained in that tethering report prepared. When we're thinking about tethering and thinking about questions of tethering, a lot of folks ask, well, what is tethering? And the definition of that is the use of a rope or chain to tie a dog to a stationary object as a primary method of confinement for that dog. And that practice would include the use of the rope or chain to tie it to the stationary objects such as a tree, a fence, ground state, house, or a trolley system for the sole purpose of providing the, a method of confinement or keeping the dog under control. And the practice of walking a dog on a leash would not be considered tethering. Some issues that come up related to tethering, I think generally, it's been researched pretty well, and there's a lot of information and materials available on the issue across the United States. And the two issues that keep coming up in everyone's research is public safety and animal welfare. Some of the elements regarding public safety related to the tethering of dogs, is dogs that are tethered and constantly kept on a chain lacks adequate socialization, and they don't get the necessary amount of exercise to relieve excess energy. And that can in turn contribute to dangerous aggressive behaviors, such as nuisance sparking or bites and aggression toward people. Some studies that were done, and we'll talk about a little bit further, by CDC, indicated that perpetually tethered dogs are nearly three times more likely to bite than dogs that are not ordinarily kept on a chain. And the most likely victims of these dog bites are children, which are small and weaker targets. And of course, there are studies also found that the dogs that are chained and- also found that the dogs that are chained and most likely to bite are intact male animals as well. So several other organizations such as the AVMA or the American Veterinary Medical Association, as well as the American Humane Association, and of course, the Humane Society of the United States, all are against tethering and recommend to not tether dogs. And so that's some change, I think, in the past 10, 15 years regarding public perception and as well as professionals' perceptions about tethering and, and whether it's appropriate for confining dogs. The nonprofit group UnchainYourDog.org does a lot of work and has done a lot of study and research, which a lot of the information derived in this report came from, from their research. They indicated dogs naturally feel protective of the territory, and when confronted with a perceived threat, they respond according to their fight or flight instinct. A chained dog, which is unable to take flight, often feels forced to fight. So dogs shouldn't be allowed to run loose either, and dogs should be socialized and kept inside the home or in a fenced yard. The New Mexico Department of Public Safety did a study, which I thought was, I think that it's one of the, the only government studies that I found, and I thought it was a really good resource when looking at this because it was some, it was an organization that was government, it was independent, it wasn't from the perspective of animal advocates, and it wasn't from the perspective of folks that are, that are for tethering or proponents of tethering. So I thought it was a really good neutral study and a good neutral resource. And they, I did attach that as an attachment, a supplement to the report. And they had some very good conclusions in support of disallowing tethering or not recommending tethering as the sole method of confinement. They found that tethered dogs are often frustrated, frightened, or easily agitated. Therefore, it's not surprising when they attack and bite. And the reasons logical. Dogs are social animals with a biological need for companionship, usually supplied by a human family. And when they're on a tether constantly, social contact from dogs and humans is withheld. Sensory deprivation becomes the norm, and boredom, frustration, anxiety, agitation, and aggression follow in rapid succession. Dogs who are adequately socialized with humans and other animals and who are properly restrained by the use of fences and runs when they are outdoors are less of a threat to family members, passerby, law enforcement officers, public utility inspectors, telephone and cable repair persons, postal delivery persons, and other visitors, and of course, members of the community. The result is a safer neighborhood. The United States Department, Department of Agriculture has also voiced their experience in enforcing their Animal Welfare Act that has led them to conclude that continuous confinement of dogs by tether is inhumane. A tether significantly restricts a dog's movement. A tether can also become entangled around or hooked on the dog's shelter structure or other objects, further restricting the dog's movement and potentially causing injury. Many dogs that are perpetually tethered do not receive basic care and are more susceptible to injury and disease. Most of the photos I've used, actually, all these photos, you'll notice in the report and, and in the PowerPoint presentation, are Burlington dogs. These are photos that were taken by our field officers. To get a little further into the animal welfare aspects of tethering and the concerns that we see as animal services in the field, evidence of cruel treatment and neglect involving continuously tethered dogs commonly encountered by animal care and control and veterinary professionals includes the severe injuries sustained by collars and chains that have become ingrown or embedded into the dog's neck, as well as entanglement in chains and cables, and sometimes death as a result of hanging by jumping over a nearby object such as a fence. This photograph is another photograph that was taken by one of our field officers in a community here in Burlington. And you can kind of, it's very telling of the conditions that dogs are often, we often find dogs that are perpetually tethered. Some of the concerns we see here, this was a neglect case and cruelty case. We see a dog that's emaciated, in an emaciated body condition. There's kind of remnants of what was a shelter for the dog, no food or water. There's debris, of course, strewn about the yard, as well as a metal pole there that could easily be a source for the tether to become entangled in. And there's a fence nearby and within reach of the dog's chain where we could easily see the dog try to escape or jump over the fence and, and of course, suffer substantial injury or death. Tethered dogs are also susceptible to attack by other animals because there's not a barrier that protects them from other animals from approaching. So some concerns we have with that is, is rabies and of course, the injury that could come to the dog. There's no way for the dog to flee from such an attack. In Alamance County, we just got our fourth positive rabies this week in a raccoon. From my knowledge, I think two out of our four cases have been from the city, but it, don't quote me on that yet, but I need to check the data. Adverse effects due to prolonged exposure to extreme heat or cold are also concerns. We especially, hear concerns from citizens in the wintertime when it's very cold, and we have folks that observe dogs without proper shelter and, and very frigid temperatures. And dogs on the tether are restricted and limited to space, and they're often without shelter or that properly protects them from the elements. And of course, malnourishment and unsanitary conditions, which this photograph illustrates, are often present. And often, dogs that are perpetually tethered are simply forgotten in their yard. And so they don't always get regular access to food or water as normal. This is another picture from our community that, that illustrates a condition. In the center of that photograph is a puppy that's tethered. The practice of continuously tethering a dog is increasingly recognized by pet owners, animal health and welfare professionals, lawmakers, and others as an issue of public safety and as a form of animal cruelty. Tethering regulations in several other North Carolina communities involve either a total ban on the practice or permitting the practice only for a few hours per day. And I think the most that any one community is, is permitting it is three hours within a 24-hour time period. Almost all of these communities illustrated here that have provided for a ban or a limit on the practice have also provided specific exemptions to the ban for particular lawful activities during which tethering a dog would be temporary and reasonable. And such things are during lawful animal events, hunting activities, while a dog's actively engaged in shepherding or herding livestock, or meeting the requirements of a camping or recreation facility, law enforcement activities, or having, after having taken possession of a dog that appears to be stray, and after having advised animal control of the stray, as well as when the animal's caretaker is outside and without, within eyesight of the animal. One of the proposals that, after researching and doing a report, one of the proposals we're making is to ban the practice of perpetual tethering in the city of Burlington with these, these listed exceptions. And we feel that those are reasonable and also consistent with what other communities have already done. An implementation period of, for any type of, of change to the current practices regarding tethering, we feel should be lengthy and provide ample opportunity for individuals to come into compliance, as well as stage it in a way that we can also provide support and information and resources. Compliance is ultimately the goal, not relinquishment of, of the dog. And a lengthy implementation period will help us support this goal. One of the phases that we're proposing, if we were to implement a tethering ban in the city, would be to conduct a one-year public information campaign initially. And this would inform residents of the new ordinance, provide information and resources to assist with transition to an alternative method of confinement. This would be a year long, so we would have an opportunity to reach out to the community and inform citizens about the change in ordinance, and also to provide some education on why we're looking to make this transition and the, the benefits of not perpetually tethering your dog. Phase two, after this initial year-long education and public outreach period, would be a six-month period during which officers would begin issuing written warnings to dog owners that they encounter that are not in compliance. And in addition, they would continue providing information about the ordinance changes and resources for alternative confinement other than tethering. There's also some nonprofit groups that are in our region that are active in other counties that assist with counties and municipalities that make this ordinance change with tethering. And essentially, what they do is come in and help pet owners or dog owners that are in need, financial assistance with meeting compliance of the new ordinance. So they will help assist with fence building, and usually along with that, they, they help get the pets spayed or neutered. Part of the six-month phase two period would include animal control officers doing follow-up with the owners that they had encountered during that initial phase one year-long period to ensure compliance and write, also provide a written warning to those still not in compliance along with the additional resources. Any dog owners at this point in the phase two would be given until the end of phase two or 30 days, whichever is greater, to come into compliance prior to phase three begins. So phase three would begin a full 18 months after the ordinance went into effect. And it would include full enforcements and, full enforcement of the ordinance and animal control officers would then begin following up with dog owners which previously received with written warnings. And if they're still not in compliance, they'd begin the citation process. Which brings us to how we would address violations. Of course, the first offense would be a written warning. The second would be subject to citation and a $100 fee. And essentially, to go along with the support of not relinquishing the dog, but getting folks into compliance and also promoting responsible pet ownership, at this point, we would propose, if the dog's not already spayed or neutered, we may waive the citation or the fee in lieu of the owner having the pet spayed or neutered by a veterinarian, and then providing proof of that within 14 days or two weeks. If there's a third offense, it would be a $250 fee. And then fourth and subsequent offenses would subject it to a class, class three misdemeanor and a fine of up to $500. This is all under, I think it's North Carolina General Statute 414 that addresses the animal cruelty and penalties for animal cruelty. The additional consideration that we also included in the tethering report, although it's not exactly related to tethering, but I've heard a, a number of citizens express interest in increasing the limit to the current two, I think, the number two dogs that are permitted per residence in the city of Burlington. And so I've heard a lot of interest in that. And our officers out in the field here at two, sometimes we, we encounter folks with three small dogs or, that are over the limit that, you know, then have to become, we have to address and get into compliance. So this is something I think that should be looked at and perhaps considered for an amendment. Other Almanz localities with limits per owner include three in Graham, Hall River, and Meben. And I wasn't able to get the official number for Elon and Gibsonville if they do have a limit by this evening. So what we would like for council to consider is, in combination with the proposed tethering recommendations and existing ordinances that address animal nuisance issues, staff would recommend the following for consideration. Permit up to four dogs per owner at any one residence, provided that every dog in the household must be spayed or neutered if the number of dogs is greater than two. So essentially, it would allow for two dogs, as is currently, whether they're spayed or neutered or not. But we would increase the limit of up to four dogs. And that, that may be more reasonable to be three dogs, but of up to that, and any, any number of dogs that's greater than two would need to be spayed or neutered. Again, that goes in hand with promoting responsible pet ownership. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of the report and, and the attachments that were included there.
Questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I would like to thank, first of all, you know, it's a very thorough report. I've made my way about two-thirds of it. Very good. And I'm very interested in this topic. And when you think in terms of the implementation period, the sooner we act, the more we can get into that, if there's some action. Mayor, I would like to propose that we have a public hearing to get citizen input on this, and I'd like to do it more sooner than later, you know, because I think it is an issue that needs to be addressed.
I agree. I'm just a little bit, I'm sorry, interrupt.
I'm through.
You know, the only thing that I would say to this is, it seems like we're more than fair in reference to the timeline. Is there, has there been any discussion as opposed to 12 months, eight months, for example, and the six months to three months? I mean, let's move this thing quickly and move it longer if we're going to move in that direction.
I think that when we're looking at that, and I'm looking at this with my experience going through this process in Orange County as well.
Sure, right.
The longer we can make the implementation period, the more we can mitigate any negative impacts to intake at the shelter.
Sure.
So the last thing we want to do, and for some folks, it is a matter of resources. Some folks don't have the extra money to build a fence, and we need to be able to give those people time to make arrangements or to work with them or to try to guide them to resources to try to get into compliance.
Okay. I guess then, help me here. Obviously, the suggestion for a public hearing on this, when would you guys want to have that public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, could we consider the first meeting in October, maybe, with that, because this would be good to ordinance form?
All right. I guess the question would be, we have a public hearing. Obviously, we have some information in front of us. I guess to vote up or down. I think the, the question might be with me is in reference to the number of dogs. That four seems like a lot to me. I mean, I love dogs. I'm all about it.
I thought I would just throw that out there, not really knowing the full history of how it came to be two, but certainly-
I certainly would like to have some discussion from council in reference to that number. So, help me here.
It's been two since the code was adopted in 1946, you know. I think probably that, you know, some movement in that area. I don't know that I'd want to go to four.
Right.
But three, you know, I would certainly consider. I think that would be reasonable.
I guess my question right now is, do we want to have this discussion, the first meeting in October, every, every bit of it, a public hearing, a vote on it, and be one way or the other, up or down? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'd like to have a public hearing. I'd like to see the ordinance, you know, in reasonably final form at that point. And I'd be prepared to vote not later than the second meeting in October.
Okay. Charles, can we work on that in September?
It can be ready. It's, yes, has a, in pretty good form already. It won't take much, but we can have it ready.
We have it ready.
All right, ready to get to you in mid-September.
We're going to be looking at the tethering issue.
Tethering issue plus would be the, the number on the, the dogs.
And I'd just like to raise the council where to as well as in the area, that, you know, in the past, I guess pit bulls have gotten popular in this area. And when you put four pit bulls in somebody's yard, it creates a problem to me.
It's a lot of dogs.
Yeah, a lot of dogs. Because we got a lot of complaints now, and I get calls about dogs being, you know, in the yard and stuff, barking all night long. And the other thing too, I have, and, and I used to be a dog owner, and I got old and I couldn't take care of the dog. So if you got, if you get old and can't take care of the dog, you don't need a dog. Trolley system.
You can come adopt a small dog, though.
No, I don't need a small dog. I'm a dog, I'm a man. I need a dog dog. Trolley, the trolley system.
They have big attitudes, those small dogs.
Yeah, I know. I know. I got one. I'm a small man too, so. Trolley system. Point A, point B, run the line through it and let it run. So that seems to be a problem as well.
Yeah, I think when you're talking about any time that a dog's kept 24/7 on any type of tether, it's not just about adequate exercise, because I think that on a trolley system, they can get adequate exercise. But I think inherently, as a species, dogs are bred to be social animals. They're bred to be, quote, "man's best friend." And so that sociability is, is bred into them. And when they are deprived that, I think that's when you see a lot of negative behaviors, such as you just mentioned, the dogs barking all night long. I'm hoping that as we move to, to get dogs out of being chained in the backyard, perhaps they'll not have that boredom factor and be brought into the house or brought into a fenced yard where they can have adequate exercise and engagement. And maybe that'll help mitigate some of those nuisance complaints as well.
And the ordinance would actually include, if we go to fenced-in areas in the backyard size, if we look at that, adequate shelter and so forth.
Councilmember Butler had a question.
Well, I just, I had one comment. We may want to consider having a public hearing on the tethering issue in separate of the number of animals because I think, my thought process, the tethering issue is what we're really after here. That's what we're really trying to address. And my fear is that there would be so much input and so much focus around the number of animals. the number of animals, that it may sort of dilute the primary focus of what we're trying to accomplish, and then we could come back and take a look at the other item. I know we're going to be doing some ordinance review anyway, I think some of that's in the works, but that's just a thought process to throw out there, to try to get this one thing accomplished.
I think that's a good suggestion, just look at the first issue of tethering, then we go to the number, because I can see that it would get confused, and if you put it all in one package, we may not be able to get what we'd like to see accomplished, so.
You all right with that?
Yep.
First meeting in October.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Mr. Boni?
Yes.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. Two questions, one, the pictures that are in the report, are those in fact, the ones that were from Burlington, are they in fact perpetual tethered dogs?
Yes, these are ones that we have encountered in our field work during complaints of cruelty or investigations and things of that nature.
And how is the definition of perpetual be?
Perpetual, continual, when it's on the chain, is a primary method of confinement, so typically it's never taken off the chain unless.
But how is the city going to know that?
I guess I don't follow, what we would be considering is to say you can't keep it on a chain at all unless you're engaged in one of those activities that would accept it.
I think he's getting to the issue of enforcement, how is it this is going to be enforced?
Right.
Is this going to be by way of complaints by, to the CBC?
Yes.
Or is this going to be the police department's following up on specific calls?
It would be complaint-driven, complaint-driven, unless, of course, we're in the field and encounter it as part of the course of our other duties, or as police officers are in the field, as a course of doing their other duties.
My question is, how, if you're just observing, do you know that it's perpetual?
Yeah, what we would be proposing is to not allow tethering at all, except if the owner's outside in invisible view with the dog, and so it would be some indicators for us as we go to investigate these situations, is there, you know, a doghouse, is there a chain, is it a worn, well-worn path around the area where the dog's obviously been confined there? Do we have neighbors complaining and making observations, and our own observations as we drive by or go out to investigate? Have we seen this occurring numerous times?
Well, the three hours that you mentioned, is that a part of the ordinance?
No, that's, I was referencing some other municipalities and localities that have adopted different ordinances, for example, in Guilford County, they're not putting any time limits, but in Scotland County, they have a one hour within a 24-hour period, and so how Guilford addressed theirs was to allow attended tethering when an animal or a dog is outside on a tether, and the owner is outside in visual range of the animal, how other, and the reason that's there is for folks that may not have the means to build a fence, or maybe they have a small dog, or they're elderly, or, there's a variety of reasons, but for whatever reason, perhaps for a few minutes each day, they go outside and they have a place they can put it on the tether so it can relieve itself and get a little exercise. So we don't want to be too restrictive, and we don't want to exclude other individuals from pet ownership and being able to own a dog. At animal services, we think that human-animal bond is valuable and intrinsic to what we do, and so we want to promote that, and promote that in a way that includes responsible pet ownership.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the public comment period, we have none, brings us to city council comments. Couple, August 22nd, 2014, from 4:30 to 9:00 will be the Fourth Friday Event at the Historic Depot downtown, Free Shred Event, Saturday, September 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Fire/Polic Training Center. 2014 Carousel Festival will be held September 20th and 21st at the park. Household hazardous waste collection at the Fire/Polic Training Facility, Saturday, October 18th, from 8:00 to 1:00. Any other comments?
And the National Softball Tournament is next weekend, starting 29, 29:30, 30:30.
Thank you. Also, we've picked up 4,559 signs, thank you staff for that. Also, for the ones that we're not available, or not able to attend, we had a celebration of sorts for Congressman Howard Cobal Tuesday for the, I think it was the Rotary Club luncheon, Councilmember Butler helped move that project along, we gave, we had a resolution for Congressman Cobal, and also we presented Congressman Cobal with the city, with a key to the city, so it was very well attended by council members, but also very well attended by members of the community and the Rotary Club, so I think it was very much appreciated, appreciative of us doing what we did, so for that, Councilmember Butler, thank you for spearheading that attack. So, any other comments from council? Not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor make a motion that we adjourn till Thursday, October 21st, 2014, at 8:00 a.m.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, thank you.